I call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, October 28th, 2024, and the time is 6:00 P. M. This meeting is being livestreamed and recorded. The recording of this meeting will be posted on the district website as soon as possible. Welcome, members of the community here tonight to observe the important work being done on behalf of all school districts stakeholders. Dr. Hillman, we have some items in the table file. Will you update us?
Yes, we have a few items in the table file. There are personnel items. We have an appointment, several increase, decrease, change in assignment. We have a leave of absence and some resignations, terminations, or retirements.
Very good. If there are no objections, we will add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Moved by Jeff?
Sorry.
I'm sorry, moved by Jeff, second by Corey.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Our next item is public comment. Any of you have anybody signed up? No? All right, then we'll move on to item four, which is our announcements and recognitions. Dr. Hillman, do you have anything to share?
Yes, we just have one announcement this evening. It's our ongoing piece around the sesquicentennial minute. So during the 150th anniversary of the school district, we're sharing some snippets from this book by Bruce Caldwell, The City of Schools. And so tonight, I'm going to be talking a little bit about the building that is now the White Center. So we go back to the last time that I talked about this, a couple of meetings ago. We talked about the Central High Building, 1874 construction. And of course, that was one of the earliest consolidated high schools, if you will. And so in 1899, the community started to discuss a potential replacement for the central school. And there was a lot of discussion, a lot of work. The Northfield News at that time was very influential in city politics and really actually took some really serious stands on issues facing the community at that time. And the bond referendum failed in 1899. And so the community moved forward into the 20th century with that building that was called the Central School. In 1908, they started to have concerns again about the facility. And in May, or actually it wasn't in May yet, but in 1908, Central High burned. There was a fire, and the headline in the Northfield News said, and I quote, "Central High burned. Fire Department fights stubborn blaze and old fire trap for five hours." So this was a pretty substantial thing, obviously, in the early 1900s, a fire serious. And so there was a $65,000 proposal to build a new facility. And the board debated and discussed that and then determined that they would not move forward with a referendum at that time. Instead, what they did is they used the insurance money to repair the fire and smoke damage. And they used the insurance funds to do that. This started again discussion over the next couple of years. And on February 15th, 1910, a referendum passed, 535 votes to 490 votes. It was a $90,000 building that is now the White Center. So if you think about that, that was opened a few years after the bond passed. I encourage you to, if you want to get a copy of this book, I'm certainly happy to help you. There was, back then, the students were very involved in this. And in fact, they had a little song that they were singing on Election Day that today would be considered to be advocacy, which we would, of course, not do. But it was just an interesting piece about, I think, history teaches a lot, us a lot. And so the Northfield High School that was built in that early 1910 to 1915 timeframe really was the first modern high school. And we still have that facility in our community today, serving Carlton College after again, some substantial renovations, some additions over the years and things like that. So that is the sesquicentennial minute for this evening about the building that is now the White Center. Dr. Hardy, did I miss anything there? You're my other expert on this part of Northfield history. That's what I've got.
Thank you. Board members, do you have any announcements or recognitions you want to share? All right, we're on to item five, discussion and reports. We have a summary of the public hearing regarding the 2324 World's Best Workforce Plan and Achievement and Integration Results. Director of Instructional Services, welcome back. Hope Langston will summarize the plan and the results. And any community feedback received, and board members will have a chance to ask any questions or make any comments.
So we, we shared the summary table with you in the public hearing. We were, we met our goal for all children are ready for K. We met our goal in eighth grade math, 1% away in eighth grade reading, and the other goals we continue to work towards achieving.
Thank you. Board members, do you have any questions or comments at this time? Hey, Ben?
Thanks. Great presentation. Just a question, well, a couple, but I'll take them in order. So in the third grade reading piece, have we had a chance to kind of pull out or look at results by who had been instructed under the new letters curriculum at this point? Or too early to tell, or too small a sample size? Walk me through that.
No, we, we actually do know who, what the, who the letters classrooms were. Third grade happened to be a very small contingent of teachers who were trained. So I think jury's still out on that one.
And then, so transitioning from the World's Best Workforce to the, remind me of the full acronym.
Hacker.
Yeah, I got the acronym. So what it stands for?
Apprehensive Achievement and Civic Readiness. Yeah.
Achievement. Okay. So you had listed five kind of areas. Do we see sort of bordering over the World's Best Workforce measures to those? Or are we going to think about changes to those? What does that going to look like?
So when we met with Northfield Forward last week, I, I would like for the group to rethink all of them. I mean, we're at a, we're at a good time to do that. We have new people in that group. And I think anytime you can get that many people thinking about an issue that we're facing as a district or problems to solve, we're going to get some new ideas. And, and I think it'll be good for the group to process all of the potential ideas for how we measure each of those five goals in November.
Gotcha. Then one final question. So you had some other goals, I think, that were listed at the end of the presentation that were different than the World's Best Workforce. So how did those two interface?
So achievement and integration, again, we, we are able to access those funds because we neighbor Faribault. It's a relatively new source of fund for us. We are on our sec, Val, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we're on our second, second plan. First year, first year was, I think, not three years, it was two years. And now this is our first, we're coming to the close of our first three-year plan. And so those, those goals were tied to, because of the timing of it, 2022, we really were looking at our post-COVID data and trying to use that money to target specific needs that we saw in the district that really were more laser-focused than a World's Best Workforce goal.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it.
Jenny, you had a question?
Thanks, Claudia. And thank you, Hope, again. I just have a couple of questions. First, in the narrative, you talk about analyzing and responding to student data and staff input. And I was just wondering if all of the staff input that you're referring to would come from the PLCs? Or is there another area for staff input?
Which, where are you, which, where in the?
The narrative, the second page on the top.
Oh, the staff input about instructional practices, that is ongoing. For instance, I'll just give an example. The structured literacy program that we use in first through third grade called Bridge to Read. So teacher did it the way it was written last year. And this year, we know that we are now, we have kids who had it for a whole year last year. So the pacing piece and where we start classes in the order of lessons can, can reflect each individual's class, class achievement level by use of some placement tests. Staff are giving us feedback about that plan or that way to approach Bridge to Read. And we are taking that into consideration and how we best execute that curricular resource. Do we want everybody to start over in third grade? Do we want a PLC team with classes at different lessons? So these are the things we are considering as we take their input about really fine-tuning the use of that resource. Same thing with our structured phonics in fourth and fifth grade. So that's called 95% core phonics. We've taken feedback about the assessments, and we've taken feedback about the components of the lessons in, in a given week. And we really feel like that is a super necessary step because the teachers are the ones that are actually executing this, this instruction. And we need to listen to what they're telling us about what's working for kids and what's needs to be adjusted.
Perfect. And then I, and then I have a question regarding your graduation rates graph. So for the 2023 numbers, you talked a little bit about the continuing education services provided through age 21, including some of the special education students. Approximately what percentage would, would you say that, that, that consists of, would have consisted of for the 2023 for that period?
So I would have to, I have to find that data for you, Jenny, because I don't have it at the ready, how many continuing students there were. It is publicly available on the Minnesota Report Card, so I could find it. Because that, the Minnesota Report Card breaks it down into those four categories. How many graduated? How many were continuing? How many dropped out? And how many were unknown? So we can either, somebody can look that up, Dr. Hillman. What, what you won't see on the Minnesota Report Card, which is an ongoing issue for us, right, is they suppress cell sizes that are too small to publicly report. So when you go to look at specific demographics in the public-facing realm, you won't always see it on the report card. You'll see the acronym CSTR, Cell Size Too Small to Report. But we get the data in its entirety, but it won't be publicly reported on, on the MDE site, if that makes sense.
So this is the chart from the Minnesota Report Card. And so you'll see there was 4.1% were continuing. So 13 students were continuing. Now, that could be the, that could be a combination of students who are accessing those services beyond 20, beyond 18. Would that also include Hope students who are continuing at the ALC?
Yes.
So that combines both of those. So you can continue working at the ALC. The MDE also provides a five, six, and even a seven-year graduation rate report. And this is the moment where I will say one of my personal pet peeves, in which to go to the ALC, one of the main criteria to qualify is that you're behind in credits. So we bring students to this award-winning program that does an amazing job. And a lot of times, students are back on track, but not to graduate in four years, right? So they might graduate in a fifth year, and that's a wonderful celebration. But, you know, we're, we are from the grad, the four-year graduation rate, we're penalized for that, if you will. So when you look at the entirety of the class of 2023, 93% graduated in four years, 4.1 or 4% were continuing, that was 13. There were 2% that dropped out, and then 1.3% that were unknown. And I think you should talk about the unknown, because I think that's an important thing for people to understand, the kind of data that we're held accountable for when we don't know where a student is at.
So, and there's two pieces to this I want to point out. The other population that is in that continuing number are students who might arrive new to country in high school and need that extra time to gain the credits in high school. And rightly so, they're continuing, but we are penalized for it in the four-year rate. So it's not just our special education students, it can also be new-to-country students. The unknown is an interesting thing. Students, high school assignment for the purposes of the grad rate are, is the last high school that MDE can find record that they attended. And so if a student moves, and we don't know that, and they move out of state and, and we have not gotten notification from them, we're, we will take the hit because that student will be listed as an unknown. So we do everything we can to try to track down, like, who has left our high school? Why? But, but sometimes we, we are not successful. So again, I call it the perfect storm, that sometimes you have cohorts where this happened. And again, when you're dealing with a cell size as small as what we're dealing with in certain demographic groups, just one or two kids can make a big difference in that, in that graduation rate.
Okay, and then just for clarification off that, so the continuing students that we just talked about, those numbers are inclusive of the high school and the ALC altogether? Total? And then the graduation rates is also high school and ALC altogether?
If we're looking at the district rate. So we have a district rate, we have a high school rate, and we have an ALC rate.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Jeff?
Thanks for your presentation. I have a question about, you identified the term racially isolated district and said Faribault. And because we border Faribault, so first, can you go back a little bit and explain what a racially isolated district is and maybe how many there are? I mean, there's?
I don't have the answer. I, racially isolated district means that, actually, I don't, I'm not gonna, I don't want to say the wrong thing. So I would have to look that up and get to you, but it's an MDE definition, right?
Because we border one, and I'm just wondering what's?
And then in the achievement and integration guidance from MDE, if you border a racially isolated district, you are, you are eligible for achievement and integration. So it is, it is, I don't want to say it's, what would be the term I use? Because it's not a law, but it is, it is an MDE.
Yeah, so I've got it right here. So the achievement and integration program is something that's administered by MDE. It appears to be part of Minnesota statute that, that establishes the program. And it says that there are four ways that a district can become eligible for the program. We are adjoining a racially isolated district. And so the definition of that, according to MD, is an enrollment of protected class students district-wide is more than 20%, compared to the number of protected class students in one of their adjoining districts. So if you look at Faribault, you look at all the districts that are around them, they're need, based on my reading of this, there's a difference of around, of more than 20% in the protected class piece. So that's what meets the definition. And then the districts that are joining them, then, so the district itself qualifies for additional funding through that program. And then the districts that are joining them are eligible for additional funding. So Hope talked about this consortium. So the consortium is Faribault, Waterville, Allegiant, Morristown, and Tri-City United. Those are the four districts that have come together. You're not required to participate, but you certainly can. And when you do participate, then you're able to get some additional dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Corey?
I have one question. I'm hoping I can tie together a few different thoughts and get there and articulate this. Because I'm not a big fan usually of comparables to other districts. I feel like it's best when we measure ourselves against ourselves, but I understand it can be useful in just gauging where we are. So during the presentation, Hope, you mentioned the MCA top performance stats, and you pulled that out to compare. And we came in about 35th in the state out of 318, which is top 10%, which is great. And you alluded to, you know, a lot of small sample sizes for other districts. You know, for example, the top school had 81, 81% proficiency, which would be about 13 of the 16 students. Hopefully, they're always that consistently good, but as you know, a lot of these will fluctuate. So we're 35th in the state, and just to be clear, this is just for third grade MCA rating, not in any other measurement, for those listening who didn't catch the report earlier. But we're about the seventh-largest district out of this list. So there's a lot of fluctuation year to year, of course. What does that tell you from our district standpoint, that we are top 10% for this cohort? But then when you look at the size of the district, which comes with a lot more levers and layers and challenges, that we actually improve in that ranking? Does that tell you anything?
Well, I, I think that it tells us that we need to stay the course, right? We are, we have made some massive changes, starting back in 2017, 18, when we adopted our, our first reading curriculum in a long time, right? And I think what we're finding is when we use high-quality curricular materials, we reduce the variability between students' experience. We lift some of the load from our teachers for having to create everything, right, from, from start to finish, including valid assessments and responses to those assessments. So this is where, again, when I said I'm impatient, this is where I think a little patience is necessary to see this play out. Because then we threw COVID in the middle of all of that. We had some solid years after the adoption of our literacy curriculum. COVID hit, now we're climbing back up, right? But, but I think that's what that says to me, right? We, we need to stay the course, make adjustments as needed, based on feedback that we're getting from our staff about best ways to implement and adjust, but that's, that's my takeaway.
And I appreciate that. I think for me to take away is, and I'm in agreement with you, is that of the districts tested for that one cohort, we came across as the seventh-best district in like-size or larger districts, which I speaks, which I think speaks a lot to what you're saying.
And I'm really glad you did the math there, right, at your seat. Thank you.
Anyone else comment or question?
Hope, I had a question about the attendance family engagement navigators. Wanted to hear if you're able to offer any examples of the kinds of interventions that they're utilizing as they try to help families and students make it to school. And then one more item after that is, is it becoming a, a budget issue to use some of these interventions? So I know we have staff, so that's fine, but I wanted to hear what interventions they're using and if those are becoming a budget.
So when you talk about, I'll go, I'll talk about family engagement navigators. When you talk about interventions, are you talking about literacy interventions or attendance intervention? Okay. So, so one of the ways we fund those family engagement navigators in partnership with HCI. So we're very thankful for that partnership. We appreciate the support that they offer the district. But the two family engagement navigators at the elementary level are actually employees of HCI. And what that does is free them up to do some things that district employees can't easily do, like go to the house and pick up the student and bring them to school. Or offer some in-home support for second uses, for families whose English is not their first language. And so it gives us some nimbleness, I want to say, in offering supports. But again, they are funded both from HCI and actually our achievement and integration budget. So Melissa, who was just hired at the secondary level for, as part of this MT, or part of the attendance pilot, she is a district employee. But what she is going to offer that the other attendance navigators don't is that direct family support and student support via groups. I mean, she's, she's just starting, so we haven't offered any yet. Right now, she's getting a lay of the land and the, and the needs identified. But that's something that is specific to that role, that we believe is a new add that will make a difference. Yep.
Okay. If there are no more questions or comments, then we will move on to our next item. Thank you, Hope.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Spring Creek Elementary School Improvement Showcase with Tanya Will, Spring Creek interim principal, providing the board with an overview of the successes and highlights of 2023, 2024, and focus areas. Welcome.
Well, thank you. It is truly my pleasure to be with you this evening to share the school improvement showcase of Spring Creek Elementary School. It reflects the work of the fantastic staff, students, and families that I'm just honored to serve. While I am new to this position of interim principal, I am really quite familiar with the school. In my 36th year as an educator, most of my time has been spent in this district, and most of it has had, has been at Spring Creek. So I'm just delighted to serve in this role. I'm in a kind of unique situation to see this from a teacher's stance and a principal's perspective. When I look at the strategic plan and vision that I know you've seen many times, I've served the district in many different capacities. And through these experiences, I've had the opportunity to expand the lenses that help us see and understand the importance of a strategic plan that kind of binds us together in creating spaces for commonalities rather than divisions of labor. And I've agreed and nodded my head to many of the other visions throughout the years, but this one really strikes a chord that resonates with the essence of what it means to be educated. We prepare every student for lifelong success by developing critical thinkers who are curious and ready to engage in our society. And I'm just all in on this. When you say critical thinkers, you say curious, you say engage, that's really what school's all about. So I applaud those that were in on creating this vision and seeing how important that is. As we move to the strategic commitments, again, things you're very familiar with, so nice to have these six commitments, which are the pillars that just help us make the decisions that you have to make every day. And as a principal, I'm finding there's a whole lot of decisions to make every day. And so it's nice to have these to lean on, to just know what we're all about. With the district benchmarks, these just keep us focused on where we're going and help us measure our progress along the way. As Hope's talking about all these different measurements, you can just see how these benchmarks have played their part in this with the workforce. And, and they're everywhere you look as you see things happening in the schools. Today, I will share some highlights and I will, and some focus areas for improvement while aligning my comments with the vision, strategic commitments, and benchmarks set forth by Northfield Public Schools. So the SIP goal results. The 2324 elementary SIP goal targeted math fact and reading fluency, aiming for 80% proficiency. At Spring Creek, at the end of the 2324 school year, 78% of the students in grades one through five met the oral reading benchmark in STAR, and 89% of the kindergarteners met the STAR fluency benchmark. Reading fluency is a foundational skill that builds a bridge between word recognition and comprehension, just a key ingredient in building literacy. In the area of math, we had 94% of our students in grades three who met the multiplication benchmarks, and we had strong performances in grades four and five where we set local norms for those. We know that math fact fluency contributes to students' ability to solve more difficult math problems quicker and more accurately. Since math facts are the building blocks for more advanced math concepts like algebra and problem solving, students who are fluent in math facts can spend less time on basic calculations and more time on problem solving. This was, these were exciting results because there was a lot of effort put into the fluency As I look at highlighting a couple of things, the first one was an upward trend in MCA proficiency. I want to thank Hope for helping to locate a few things along the way. We're thrilled to report that this is the second year of reading and math MCA score increases at Spring Creek. You can see on the graph that although the statewide trends for grades three through five have remained flat, or they've decreased, Spring Creek MCA proficiency scores continue to increase. Where the blue line there and the state is the bottom line, in between is the district. So we are still shy of the 80% mark, so there's always still work to do, but definitely it's a point of celebration. In, in addition to this general increase in both reading and math, we noted that our FRP subgroup showed increases in all grades in both reading and math. And we'll continue to watch this subgroup as we continue to find ways to remove barriers and connect resources, creating these equitable opportunities. Another highlight is our family engagement results. During the 202324 school year, Spring Creek Elementary prioritized reaching out to families and making sure that all families felt connected. We utilized the assistance of our family navigate, family engagement navigator, Cindy Santa, and other resources like Talking Points that delivered messages in various languages. Special focus was on regular Special focus was on regular family communication and Positive Notes Home. The parent satisfaction survey indicated an increase overall in satisfaction. Two statements that showed an increase were, I received positive phone calls, emails, or notes about my child from the school, and I believe my child's learning is a high priority at this school. That's a sample of some of the increases. And then continuing that trend into this year, 97% of the families attended family engagement conferences at the beginning of this year, and we're working to connect with families during fall conferences over the next few weeks. Prioritizing families as partners in the education of students is at the forefront of all that we do. Communication is essential for understanding, conveying student progress, and supporting And this third one, the Bridges Math Pilot and Adoption, I don't know if I can say enough about this. This process was well thought out, and there were multiple stakeholders that had a part in the piloting, planning, and support of this grand effort. The work that occurred prior to this year is cause for a successful experience for teachers, students, and families for this year. The summer work team and teachers involved in piloting the Bridges Math curriculum were just instrumental in setting up a cohesive plan for successful implementation. Bridges implementation leads and math leads were put in place at the building level to provide that support, and a district math coach was hired to provide leadership and support and continuity of professional development. Now, if I get into some of the focus areas for this year, it's kind of exciting because while these are both challenge areas, there also room for opportunity. And the first place I want to talk about is our Bridges Math implementation. Wow. This year, we're implementing the new Bridges Math curriculum in grades K through five, and it is very exciting, and it requires a great deal of planning and preparation and new learning. In recent rounding conversations with teachers, I heard repeatedly how hard teachers are working to implement this curriculum and how much they are enjoying the way that students are interacting with the math concepts. It's it's pretty fun to see. They see the value in the depth and breadth of the math that students are engaged in. They see students taking ownership of their learning, authentic application of concepts, and a lot of conversation around math. When I observe in the classroom, students are working with the materials, engaged in the activities, and are talking about their understanding or their misunderstanding. And recently, TNTP consultant groups worked with the leadership and coaches to observe the math classrooms, to collect data on how the math implementation is going. So I love that because it's not just here's a bunch of stuff, good luck. There's a continued look on, hey, how's it going? And we look forward to reviewing this data and using it to strengthen instruction and learning. Another focus area at Spring Creek, I just have to speak about the professional development of teachers. We we are all in on this. This year, elementary teachers have quite a lot of new learning on their plate. Many teachers are involved in the science of reading training mandated mandated by the Read Act. It's, this has been occurring during PLC time, and during these sessions, teachers increase literacy instructional skills and understanding that they apply in their lessons. Currently, teachers are working on Module Three. It's very organized. It's called Effective Instruction in Language and Early Literacy, and they have several other modules to complete throughout the year. Teachers are supported through leadership from the district combined with guidance from Building Literacy Leads and teams. The other part of the professional development is definitely comes with the Bridges Math implementation. There's a lot of learning for teachers there as well. Each lesson has many layers of learning. As teachers facilitate these lessons, they too are learning a whole bunch of different kinds of approaches to the same kind of math they've been teaching, promoting deeper understanding of mathematical concepts. Students are engaged in a variety of math tasks that encourage inquiry, discussion, and participation. The implementation leads, math leads, and math coach provides support and guidance in this process, and our Building Professional Development time is dedicated to a successful implementation, and often grade-level teams have been utilizing their common prep time to reflect and plan forward together. In addition, teachers will be learning from peers as they visit classrooms at the same grade level in another building that's coming up in a couple of weeks. They're called Math Lab Days. And I just can't say enough about how investing in teacher development strengthens the educational program, programming for our students at all levels. So this is really a great opportunity for teachers and a lot to, a lot to take in too as they're instructing. And the third focus area is the multi-tiered system of support. I know that last year there was quite a lot of work around this, and it just keeps going. Our multi-tiered system of support continues to just be the framework of all learning functions, and this framework helps us organize resources to meet the needs of all students and aims to ensure that students receive the right level of support to succeed academically, behaviorally, and socially, emotionally. MTSS guidance begins at the district leadership team, who provides direction to our school leadership team, and that school leadership team regularly meets to engage in professional development, which is a piece this year that I'm very excited about. And it will deal with effective ways to meet student needs, and they also review and discuss school-level data. This group informs the problem-solving team that works weekly with teachers on individual student needs in the area of reading, math, and social-emotional learning. Together, this whole system uses data to inform decisions that lead to the actions needed. MTSS affects all students, whether in the core instruction or in intervention. Much of our effort this year is in strengthening the Tier One instruction, which in turn would decrease the amount of intervention needed. We face multiple unique student needs, and we aim to meet these needs effectively with this systematic approach to individual needs. In the spirit of continuous improvement, we reflect on both strengths and areas for improvement in order to strength, stretch to new heights using the vision that guides us. Once again, we prepare every student for lifelong success by developing critical thinkers who are curious and ready to engage in our society. Thank you for the opportunity to celebrate the efforts and progress and to share areas of focus as we move forward. I am ready for any comments or questions, I think.
So much. Excellent. Excellent presentation. Board members, do you have any questions or comments at this point? Jenny?
All right, thank you. I just have two questions. The first is in the focus area three, the for MTSS. It talks about the leadership teams using data.
Yeah.
And I was just wondering where where the data is from, what particular set of?
Set of data? I believe they're using, that we're using, I don't know what you call it, but a system called Five Lab that integrates all the data that comes in. It's been very exciting to see all of the, really a lot of the things that Hope is dealing with, bringing in and assessing different things, all coming into one system, and then being able to just, if we're looking at a specific student, to be able to see all those things just lined up. I'll have to admit, I haven't dug super deep into it yet, but there are many people that have been on this team a little longer than I have that are feeling really good about how that system's working. So the data that we're collecting, I feel, is getting into the MTSS system, and it's being able to be useful to make individual decisions for students.
Great. And then second question is regarding the family engagement conferences.
Yeah.
Were those parents, did they have to make appointments and set up certain timeframes? Or was it walk-in only?
They made appointments, and they had a certain timeframe. Really exciting that there were 97% that that showed up and were there, and only a few that didn't, that didn't make that connection early on. We really encourage teachers to reach out to those families to make sure that they've been, you know, contacted, even if they couldn't make that time. And again, that would be, you know, prior to school actually starting. So that's kind of impressive to have that high of a number. We're hoping also that in the next couple of weeks, we can touch base again. All of the families were offered an in-person conference, and if it works better for their families to do a Zoom conference or a phone call, they could do that too. But just to engage with the families to see what we can learn and move forward together.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Rob?
Thank you for the great presentation. I'm really happy with all of the data that you presented, and I understand the focus on reading and math, but I want to just kind of go off task for a minute because my kids went to elementary school in Northfield, and they learned how to read, and they learned math. But I think, at least for my older son, the most important thing that happened to him in elementary school was that Mr. Jenny handed him an oboe. So I'm wondering if you can talk a little bit about the things that aren't tested, like gym and music and art, because those are really important aspects of the elementary school experience, because they're introducing children to so many other things besides these two basic subjects.
And I think that we call them specials for that reason. Kids really view that, view those times as a really important part of their day. I think we have a super strong staff that is delivering those kinds of, kinds of subject areas to get kids involved and engaged in art. I will have to admit that, well, prior to this year, I was the science specialist, which I know that is tested in fifth grade, but in that time, I never got to go into the other specialist classrooms, or I never asked to, or I don't know, it just never happened. And now in the position that I am, the power that I, how powerful it is for kids to be involved in the art program there, and the way that they're, they get excited about these different parts that are being presented to them is pretty amazing. And going into the music classroom and just seeing the breadth of exposure that they have, these, this is a great time for foundational things to be happening. And again, in FIED, wow, stations all over, kids knowing what they, you know, what they could do during that time and what they're working on. It was pretty amazing and weirdly eye-opening for me because I kind of feel like I kind of get how things go at Spring Creek, yet to actually be in the classroom and see what's happening, there's some pretty amazing things going on. Thanks for bringing that up. And I might even point out that before school and during school, even the band and the orchestra program that are there, we have some fantastic people leading that. And yeah, I can't say enough about how that really fills out the whole person. Thanks for bringing that up.
Anyone else? Cory?
Thanks, Tanya, for your many years of service, particularly at Spring Creek. So you've been in this role for about three months. I'm curious.
Sure.
What has been most surprising to you? What has been most joyful for you to see? And then what's your personal goal for the remaining eight months of the academic year?
Wow. Well, it comes down to the people, the students. I, I just can't, when, when I came into this role, I realized I would come into a role where I knew over 80% of the students that would be there and over 80% of the staff, and that was a big, a big thing for me. And it continues to be just so delightful for me to go into classrooms, do observations, but also know the kids that are there, know the staff in front of me, and the staff I don't know, I get to work with. And that's, I love doing that. I love working with teachers as they're developing as teachers. I love working with kids to see what they're learning about next and having conversations like that. So that's, that's really what keeps me going. The, I guess the most surprising part for me is the odd things that come your way as a principal, because sometimes I just laugh at like, okay, we're doing this, and like, this feels really important, and this is really tiny, but it's going to be big. And this is the, it's just such a variety in a day. Luckily, I like that as well. But there are just some surprising things that come your way, but there are so many things that are braided together to make a school run, and keeping your, a handle on all of those different partnerships and people and things that you have to pay attention to is, is quite amazing. And again, I've only done this for a little while. There are administrators in the room that have done this for a long time and have really done an outstanding job with this. For the remainder of the year, is what you asked me, what I've thought about from the beginning is I, I keep things pretty simple. I would like to maintain great systems that keep things running. I want to make sure that I support teachers in what they need, students in what they need, and families in what they need while fitting within the system that is set up and runs really well. So that's really what I'm hoping for.
Anyone else comment or question? Ben?
Tanya, Cory stole my questions. I'm just going to say thank you. Thanks for stepping up into this role. I know it's a learning curve, but certainly great to have you.
That it is, and I'm delighted to do that. Thank you so much for all that you do as well.
Tanya, Ben stole what I was going to say. Thank you for sharing the data, but also the heart of what brings you to the building and the kids and the staff.
Well, thank you.
All right, we have IMC, our Fall 2024 Bond Referendum. Superintendent Hellman will update us on the informational campaign and highlight upcoming events.
Yes, so just the standard report that I've been giving you for the last several months has been just reviewing what events we've had since the last time we met, and the events that we have between now and the next time that we'll meet. And to everyone's pleasure, this will be my last Bond Referendum Educational Campaign update. So since the last time that we met, we have had two high school tours. It is just amazing to me, this is, this is '22 and '23, and we continue to average the, the tour on October 15th, if I recall correctly, around 29 people attended that. And then the tour that we had on, just the other day, on October 24th, we had 20 people. So it's really, we've still had a lot of engagement, a lot of good folks coming forward. We also had a special tour on the 21st. We were able to tour the Carlton Geothermal Station with their 14, I think around 14 people that attended that. Carlton staff were able to present to us how they put the geothermal system together, what the geothermal system does for them, shared the data about how they are accelerating even more so than what they thought in terms of the return on the investment. And so that was really a great, we had to go down into the basement and see the equipment. It was really an interesting tour, so we're so grateful for the folks who have come to that. We've done some tabling at Carlton and San Antonio Colleges. We presented to the American Association of University Women, and so that was, again, about 20 people at that presentation. We did our second Bond Q and A, which we had a handful of people from the community there. And then we have at least one more tour scheduled, that's this coming Saturday, November 2nd. Though I just, just before the meeting started, I got a request for another tour, so we'll see about integrating that in if we're able to do so effectively. We have continued to work with KYM and radio, making sure that, we have a candidate show coming up this Thursday, so KYM asked us to come in and share the impact of the Bond Referendum. So that was myself, Val Murdestorff, and Bubba Sullivan, who did that particular segment. We've continued to talk during my regular appearances on KYM and radio, and we'll have one more. I have a regular column in the Northfield News on the fifth Wednesdays. If there's a month of five Wednesdays, I've been writing for some time, so this month has a fifth Wednesday, so I have a column in this Wednesday's Northfield News as well. So that is what we have done. At the end of the day, when we take the tally, it will be at least 92 events that we did over the course of time, going back to March 21st. First event we did was at the Prairie Creek School Board meeting, and it looks like the last event will be the tour on Saturday. And so I'm just really grateful to the community who has been engaged. Our goal from the beginning was to have an informed electorate. That's what we cared about. We want people to know what we're asking for, why we're asking for it, what the impact of it is, if it passes, what's the potential impact if it doesn't. And at the end of the day, now it is in the voters' hands. And we have done everything, I think, that a reasonable person could say that we could do, and we've, we are at the point where democracy works, and in a little more than a week, we'll have our answer. So I thank the board for your support and for your ongoing encouragement to make sure that we lived up to making sure that we did our part to have an informed electorate. One more piece of data that I want to share with you, I've been reporting to you about the number of people who have been accessing our tax calculation impact calculator. So to date, we have around 420 total website calculations, 396 residential, 24 commercial, two individualized agriculture, agricultural property requests. So I think that goes to show that people are looking at that tax impact calculator, they're determining what is it for them, and that is part of making sure that we inform the public. So I stand for any questions. So I stand for any questions that people have at this time.
And while the board thanks you for all the informational events that you've put on and often staffed, I know the district personnel and other stakeholders have helped with that. But especially want to thank you for organizing that. And I think that the website and the tours continue to be great tools for that informational campaign.
It's been my privilege. Thanks for the opportunity.
Anyone else have a comment or a question at this time? Cory?
I just want to second what you said, Claudia, in thanking Matt, and Val, and Anita, and other district officials for carrying out the work of the board as we directed you back in March. Appreciate the efforts and informing our voters, and hopefully, they will be informed when they show up next Tuesday. So thank you.
Anyone else? Question or comment? Okay, very good. Our next item is committee reports. And we have a report from Cory Butler with the Community Education Advisory Committee and also a Finance Committee report. Cory, do you want to let those stand or give some comments?
I'll let them both largely stand. I will mention one thing. November 14th is National Community Education Day. There will be a celebration at the Northfield Community Education Center, so I just want to amplify that for those who aren't going to be reading through our board packets. Otherwise, I will let them stand.
Very good. And then we also have a report on the District Youth Council by Ben. Do you want to let that stand or make some comments?
I can just make a few comments, and I think they kind of echo what Matt mentioned just in terms of referendum, the board, sorry. The District Youth Council held a session, I think, in September. And that has been since a few of our last board meetings, but it's included in that report. And I think they had an informative candidate forum last week as well. So they've been busy, engaged in terms of what's going to be on the ballot in November, and they're doing a nice job with that. And had a chance to visit with them this last week as well, just for their regular standing meeting. So that was good, too.
Love that group. Okay, thank you. Our next item is our consent agenda. And as a reminder, there were some personnel items in the table file that were added to that consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping for separate consideration? Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Okay, moved by Ben. Second? Jenny? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next is our items for individual action. We have one item tonight, and that is the Policy Committee Recommendations. The school board is requested to approve the policy committee's recommended updates. I'll take a motion and then open up to discussion. In fact, I'll move that we approve updates to Policies 207, 509, 512, and 513 as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rob. Okay, is there any discussion on any of the policies? Okay, brilliant. Then we will go to a vote. Make sure that your mic is on when you vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. And then are there any items for information? Okay. Our next item is our future meetings. Those are all regular meetings at 6:00 PM in this boardroom. Let's see, I have Tuesday, November 12th, Monday, December 25th, and Monday, December 9th. I'm sorry. Tuesday, November 12th, Monday, November 25th, and Monday, December 9th. 6:00 PM in this boardroom. Thank you for that. All right, that is all the business that we have tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn? Okay, moved by Jeff. Second? Second by Jenny. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, then we are adjourned.